First item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from our August 3rd Select Board Meeting, and I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Leaves the motion, and Heather's the second. Changes, corrections, omissions, errors, anything about the minutes?
Aye, none.
None.
Nada.
Nada. They're all set with them, and I wasn't here, so I have no clue. But I did read them. I didn't mean it that way.
No.
All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Citizens' comments. If there's anyone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on our agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens' comments? I'm only, I'm looking at you, Bill, because you're the only one here, but they're also have the folks online. No answers or questions or comments online from previous stuff, Julie?
No, that's, I've got something in old business.
And the next item is old business. Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
I can. So first, High Street, and follow-up to that, Kirby, we talked about relocating the stop sign. Kirby looked at the intersection. The reason that stop sign is where it is, is because there is a huge section of ledge underneath that corner. So that's why that stop sign is backed up a little bit. The, I believe at this point, the sidewalk paint is in, so now it's time, and they'll be painting those. So they're going to get those lines painted. Hopefully that will help. If not, we could potentially do some lettering up there before that. But moving the stop sign will be a much bigger deal then, than we think. And for plowing, the way they come off that intersection. But the real reason is the ledge. He said there's a huge section of ledge under there, which is why it's backed up.
And it really just bothered me because of the incident I saw.
Yeah.
Well, it just really bothered me because of the incident I saw was not even a break, and I worry that someone's going to get-
There's going to be another accident.
Really hurt.
Absolutely.
And, and that was on a bicycle. So there's one thing to have an accident with a car, there's another thing to have an accident with a bicycle.
Correct.
And, have we been able to get any patrol up there? I mean, anybody, you know, kind of-
The guys do their patrol in and around through there. There's, they don't sit there, because it's just not a high-
No, well, they can't. I mean, that's pretty tough.
Yeah.
Yep.
But they have, they, I have asked them to increase that, and-
Yeah.
Um-
Good.
But I think it's also getting the word out. You know, if you're biking on that road, that's the second time that somebody's come flying down High Street on their hill on a bike.
And they don't even brake.
And flown through that intersection.
Yeah. And that's the scary part. And I was, you know, yeah, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hopefully all that, the lettering and the painting and everything else will kind of stand it out a little more, so it'll make it more obvious.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll do steps and hopefully that'll-
Good.
-mitigate the issue.
Good.
The PD assessment, Jim Baker's going to be at your September 21st meeting. Him and I are meeting on September 2nd, where I will get the report and go over it. Then he's on vacation, so he'll be at your meeting on the 21st.
When do we get the report?
I'm supposed to get the report on September 2nd. But then he'll be here on the 21st to kind of present it. At that point, we will talk to you about, uh, the police search and where we're at with that. At that point, that kind of goes into a later agenda, but at that point, him and I will have, you know, formulated what we're looking at for a job description and, and those kinds of things. So that'll kind of all be presented to you guys at that September 21st meeting.
Good.
And then Cannabis Board, we're still continuing to advertise. We have one position open. We haven't heard, I haven't received any letters of interest at this point. We'll continue to advertise until we have something.
So, may I just ask?
Yeah.
So the one position open, that's all we're planning on filling? Is that, we do-
That we only have one vacancy at this point.
Okay. But are there others who have stepped up?
Well, there were-
So we, we, you, you created a seven-member board.
Right.
We have six members. One member resigned, so we have an opening.
Right. Okay. Perfect.
So when we went through the process of appointing the board, we had a few people that we had said no to.
If you'd like, if-
Let me just, it might be worth a phone call to them, if they're still interested in it.
I certainly can. The board is asking to re-advertise, so, but I can certainly reach out to them if you want.
I mean.
Yeah, okay. Um, hey, um, okay. Water sewer, I know Jeff is here, and this is not an agenda item tonight, but he may want to speak to it, too. So Naomi is, so the, the state's intended use plans have come out. Naomi, for water and wastewater. There's a lot of grant opportunities. The state got, also got flooded with ARPA money for their water and wastewater divisions. There are potentially some programs that have been identified where some of our existing projects could fit either as really low-interest loans, or in some cases, potentially, you know, fully funding. Like, we have been slated to be, Chester has been selected to be 100% funding for our lead, lead inventory, which is service lines, all of our lines, which would be a huge expense. So, you know, to have that 100% funded would be great, and that's something that we're going to be required to do in the upcoming years. So there's several programs. One of them, you know, I've talked to you briefly about the Forest Main on Depot Street. Jeff could definitely speak more to that. But there, there could potentially be funding that helps with that, or like I said, really low-interest loans to get that project done. It is an expensive project, just under a million for the replacement of that line. So there'd be more to come on that, but just, you know, in follow-up. So the Forest Main is not going to be an agenda item until Naomi has reviewed the intended use plans, so that we can talk about funding options at the same time.
That, that lead inventory for lead pipe, are, are there any lead pipes in Chester, Jeff?
Not complete.
Want to grab the mic?
Sorry. Not complete service lines?
Yeah.
But what, they have what they call the goosenecks coming off the mains, and maybe two or three feet. But I would say, with all the water projects we've done, replacing mains and everything, every time we replace the main-
You lose the lead.
Lose the lead, and it goes strictly to copper. So I would say probably seven-eighths of it has been covered, so it'll be a quick thing, but it'll be helpful to have someone to do it, you know, with me, and to cover that stuff.
And we're required, we're going to be required to have it.
Right.
It's going to be required by the state and, and to, to get it 100% paid for.
It's been required, they, they passed it like five years ago, and some towns have been working on it little by little or whatever, but it's required, what, 23 or 24?
I think it's 24 that it has to be completed by.
Complete, yeah.
I wasn't even aware of the fact that we even had it, and they still, I know some old farmhouses have lead spring lines and a few other things, but I didn't realize about that gooseneck off the main feed, that there was still some of those in town.
When they put in the, the old cast iron mains, that's what they put on them. And they have, they have a big nut, about this big, and they come up, I don't know why they put the gooseneck in everything, one of them, but there's about two feet of lead that goes to the services. And a lot of the services have been changed to copper, but there may be a few of those goosenecks still out there.
So how do you actually test or figure out which ones are lead or not?
That was my question.
Well, some of it we may have to dig, some of it we may just be able to test on the, the service line for the, the copper level, to figure out if they're still there. But like I said, we've done 14 or 15 water main replacements since I've been here, and that did away with all that. Everything on the South Main, everything up Graffin Street, it's all clear. And there's a few questions on Depot Street, and, you know, there's very few that are actually questionable.
So, sorry to drag this out, but for the cast iron, do they seal those joints with lead? Would that be part of it or not?
Yeah, but they're, that lead doesn't actually touch, touch the water flow.
Oh, okay.
It's, usually, they used to put okra in and then put the lead behind it to hold the okra.
Right, right. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'll stay tuned, you know, as Naomi, like I said, digest those documents. They're very different this year compared to previous years, because there is more funding. So she's going to identify projects that we know that we need, that we need to do sometime in the next several years, and see what we can get, either for fully funding, partial funding, or at least really low-interest rates. Which carries into the secondary wa, water supply. Just to give you a quick update on that, we keep going back and forth with the state about the secondary well being at Jeffrey. It, they're giving us a hard time about it. It's, so what we've decided is Naomi has identified a couple of other potential sources, a couple of other places. So we're going to proceed with potentially doing the hydro testing, the geo testing at one of these, one or two of these other locations. We're waiting to get, you know, what is pricing for that mean. So we'll be back to you soon. I think we'll have Naomi come as well, and talk about what all that means. But it's something we need to do soon. Our water usage in Chester has grown dramatically over the past year or two, some, I'm sure because COVID is here, but the town is busier, businesses are busier.
And that's, it's, it's kind of putting the reins on any future business-
Right.
-expansions.
We're getting close to our threshold.
About 20 years ago, I tried to get them to let me put Canal Street well on as a regular well use. They wouldn't allow me to, they said it was emergency backup, blah, blah, blah. Well, it only pumped 125,000 gallons in a 24-hour period. And then, you know, 10, 15 years ago, our water usage was at 145,000 gallons a day. Month of July, our usage was 190,000 gallons a day. And we have one well with no, no backup for it. So, you know, I've been pushing for this for six, seven years, some kind of redundancy, but we're not getting a lot of, a lot of assistance.
Not getting a lot of-
That's almost at our capacity then for the sewer plant. If all that water that's going out is coming back-
Yeah.
We're, we're close to-
So the timing with the sewer upgrade, you know, we'll be looking at that next year, too.
So those sites that you're talking about for potential well sites, are those town properties then?
One is a town property, that would be up at the pinnacle. That's the, the least desirable. But the other property is privately owned, but has the, you know, the property owner is willing to do an easement, sell, you know, so we, we've got to look into all those. The pieces of that first, that one is, I think, the most desirable. So, you know, what is the pricing? What, you know, all those things we're going to work through.
And who, who has the final say in it? I know the, the state's given us a hard time, it sounds like, as far as citing this, but are they the final authority to say, no, you can't have it?
They have to give us the permit. So, yeah.
So they are?
Yeah. Yeah. We've gone back and forth with Scott about the, about the redundancy at the-
Remember the emails about Canal Street?
He just is not, he is just not sold on the two, two wells in the Jeffrey well. We're just having, so it's like, how much time do you spend fighting with him? It, it's time to start just looking at other locations and having a backup plan. You know, we're, we're getting close to capacity, we've got to stop messing around with it, and, and that may mean just looking at another site, which at the end of the day, may not be that much more money, so.
So is, is Canal Street totally out of the picture?
It is. It doesn't, it doesn't have anywhere near the capacity that we need. It's only an emergency. Well, they would need, it would need a lot of improvement to even be able to be used, but it will not provide what we need.
It will not?
No.
Even expanded or redone or anything like that?
There's not really much expansion ability there.
Okay.
And they have kind of said-
The spaces, there's not enough space for that, is there?
And you're not, you can't protect that source area. There's all kinds of issues with Canal Street.
And I don't think you can get the capacity out of the ground that we need.
Okay.
It's actually about 70,000 gallons a day short of what we need-
Wow.
-right now.
Yeah.
So we need to look for a larger amount.
Yeah.
So I'm a little bit concerned about the state being able to throttle Chester and our development as we see fit. And I understand that one guy at the state who's kind of holding up, and I don't necessarily want to start a fight, but on the other hand, I'm not sure I'm ready to just give up. And, and I understand the whole politics of, you know, pick your battles and, you know, where do we go with this? But on principle, this really bothers me, the fact that we have a site that we feel is best for us, that we can develop. We probably have the hydrologic studies to show that it will meet our needs, it's right there, the infrastructure's right there, we don't have to build more pipe or much of it. It's just, it seems to me that we're going to spend an awful lot of money trying to come up with a, another site that may meet our needs, but it may not, until we do all the studies. And they're expensive. You gotta drill holes, you gotta pump water, you gotta do a whole bunch of stuff to figure it out. And there's one guy in the state who's saying, well, I don't think this is a good spot for you, so I'm not going to let you do it. So why do we have to talk to this guy? Is there nobody else at the state that we can, or is this start getting into poking somebody, you know, poking the bear with a stick?
I think it'll start poking the bear with a stick. I think Scott is the guy. I think he is the permit guy.
Yep.
And who does he, who is he accountable to?
I don't know.
Who does he work for?
Uh, it's all part of drinking water. It's all part of A&R.
Yeah, A&R Natural Resources.
It's all part of A&R.
Okay, so it's part of A&R, the Department of Environmental Conservation, or is it Water Resources or?
It's Water Resources, because he works for the Drinking Water-
Okay.
-division.
Okay.
And, and, you know, it's worth pursuing, I mean, I don't understand his full logic of having all of our resources at one site, but it's worthwhile looking at the other sites and getting an idea of what that is.
We can, and maybe it's appropriate to go ahead and have Naomi come to a board meeting. She could certainly update on everything that's been going on, could definitely speak the language that I cannot speak, share, you know, and explain Scott's reports and what, what the issues are, and then, you know, so maybe it would be, maybe it would be prudent to go ahead and do that.
And I've read some-
To give you guys a real update on-
I've read some of his emails and some of his reports, and, yeah, I'm trained in that same area. I don't agree with him, so-
Yeah. No, she doesn't either.
Yeah. And, and so the point is not that we would be doing something stupid. The point is that we would do what we see best for Chester at a reasonable cost, et cetera. So, you know, I understand, I don't want to get into the whole poking the bear with a stick, but on the other hand, I think that, I just want to go on record that I think that we should look for ways to work with this guy, or work around him if we have to, in order to make this work. And again, I agree with Heather that having two wells at the same site is probably not the best idea as far as redundancy, other than just the equipment to get the water out of the ground. So having another site separate that would provide a different source of water, come from a different source of water, makes a lot of sense. But at what expense? At what cost?
And that's kind of where we're going at now, is what is the cost to do that?
But I think we need to pursue that, because it's been years of going back and forth. So let's pursue all of our options and not fight the bear so much, or poke the bear, or whatever, that it's another three years and we're still not, not getting closer to what we need for our water supply.
Well, I'm concerned, we need to do something, no matter what we do, but it's getting to the point. Everybody's preaching about bringing in business in and, and growing, but our, our water source is at a limit, for a couple of reasons. First of all, that's a great aquifer. That's why I even considered putting a second well there. And we could have used a generator for both wells. Right now, we don't have a generator, because the, the mobile generator that we originally thought would work, it's a three-phase generator, but it, it doesn't put on enough amperage to run our pumps. So technically, we don't have a generator. And, you know, secondly, the cut down on the piping and all that stuff-
Right.
-trying to save money that way. But, you know, I don't care what we end up doing, but I'm concerned that we need to start doing something soon.
Well, and, and that's why I think we need to pursue what our other options may be. And there may be four or five.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they, they may be rated from A to F, but we should start assessing what our choices are, other than this one.
I do, I do understand his concern about if that water source got contaminated, but as Ben can attest, as far as if there was a truck rolled over, our hazmat capabilities of containing the spills are a lot more than what they were 20 years ago. So, you know, but I, like I said, I don't care where it is, but I really think we need to get something going soon.
So Naomi is doing the research, you know, getting thoughts together. So I will, when that is assembled, which I'm, I'm hoping will be sometime in September, we'll have kind of at least no costs in the next steps, I will plan to have Naomi come and update the board and talk through what the options are and what direction you want to think about heading in.
It's, it's, it sounds like we're getting the poking, not us poking the state. We're, they're basically telling us what we have to do.
And we're, and we're not giving up on, on, on the Jeffrey wall side either, but it's, it's, how long do we keep doing this? And at the end of the day, our issue needs to get resolved, and so what are the costs? What are our options and what are the costs for all these different options? That's where we're at right now. Yeah.
Good.
Okay. And then, lastly, the wood has been developed, and Brookside Bridge has started construction today.
Yes.
Bravo.
I like the idea of poking the bear. And, and I say that, and we, you could comment on this as well. How long did Matt was on a contaminated property? And for a variety of reasons, it's also made it very difficult to sell. The state was extremely uncooperative in, in even getting someone to come to the property and understanding the problems of the property. The contamination, everybody thought was a gas station. In fact, it was not really a gas station. There was old fuel tanks from many years ago that were way back by actually a little pond. Getting someone from the state to actually do that. We at the time was involved in environmental cleanup and, and testing. What were you there, probably two years, three years, something like-
Probably easily, yeah.
Yeah. And people would inquire to buy the property, and they would call the state, and the state says, oh, no, this is contaminated property. For that, they did really easy to sell. To the point of making, stay with it. You finally will find somebody who will listen to you, and I think Jeff's probably raised that well for the reasons you need to stay with it. But don't be ashamed to poke the bear. You can get the results. You do have to stay with it, and you get a lot of negative responses, but just keep that, you'll, you'll succeed. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
That's it, Kirby?
That's it. Brookside?
Yeah.
Lumber's there, and the Historical Society has dropped off quite a few new artifacts here.
And there's still one more piece coming. So some of this stuff is all getting rearranged.
Yeah.
And then, yeah.
That's fantastic. And I was talking to-
And that'll be it, that'll be enough.
Yeah, I was talking to Julie earlier about it. I wish we can get more people involved with the Historical Society, especially younger people, to get some interest in it and stuff. They serve such an important purpose in our town, to preserve our history, and to, now in this case, displaying it and stuff. And I've been to some of their meetings where they have their slideshows and presentation stuff, and they're always interesting. And I just hope that that society, for first, I'd just like to thank them for all the work they do, and get the word out there somehow to get people involved with it. I think they meet once a month, I believe, and their meetings are always interesting, and there's a lot going on there, and they could use help. But it's going to, that, some of that map back there and a few of the other things here, pretty amazing. I just, when I looked at the redex sign, I didn't realize that was old history, because I remember when that sign was up. And I was starting to get a little upset about that. Anybody else have anything for old business or any discussion? All right, we'll move on. And our police chief, search process. Julie?
Sure. So I put in your memo, kind of the process that I kind of talked through with Jim. This is a standard process, very similar to the town manager search process that we went through. Jim knows I want it to be as public of a process as it can be. So what we worked through is that job one is obviously to prepare the job description and the ad. The job description will be fairly easy to prepare, because it, this assessment is really going to dictate what the community has said. They're looking for what our officers have talked about, what they would like to see, and, and so it, it should be pretty easy. The research has been done. So then the advertisement will go out, obviously it'll be more than just local, we're going to advertise, you know, across the country, really is what they're asking towns to do at this point, so there'll be good advertisement. And then the, the plan is that that advertisement will go out by October 1, and we'll advertise for 30 days. That's the plan. Once they start coming in, Jim and his team, much like we did with the manager search process with the league, they're going to weed out those that just instantly don't meet what you're looking for. You know, they just kind of get weeded out. They'll come down to a group. The plan is that we get narrowed down to five to seven. That then goes before what we call an oral, the oral board. So there will be a panel set up. Typically, there is not more than seven on that group. And typically what happens, and Jim and I kind of nuance this a little bit, so the town manager, a select board member, because we are, we have a union, there should be a union rep on that. And this is where we can change things a little bit. So a lot of people use Trevor Whipple from VLCT, as he offers kind of an unbiased, neutral position. He's not from our town, yet he has a lot of law enforcement experience, but he's also has a lot of New England and national perspective. You know, he is the representative, he is the law enforcement guy at VLCT. So he understands the ins and outs of the laws when it comes to hiring a police chief. So he's a good, good person to have on an oral board. Springfield used him, Hartford has used him, and have found him to be very helpful and to bring a light, different kind of perspective to the board. And then into the community, so, you know, we could do, a lot of these boards have a member of the business community that sits, or a member from the school could sit, and then, then somebody who's not, just, just another citizen, right? So we can, we could say two citizens, or we could target and say we want somebody from the business community, somebody from the school, you know, that we can kind of make up how we want, and think who would be good to represent the community on that, on that board. So they, there would be, there would be two representatives from the community in some form, would be, would be on the oral board. Once that, the oral board then narrows it down to presumably two, I mean, sometimes maybe one just stands out like this is the person, I don't know, but we would want it narrowed down to no more than two. And at that point, again, much like the town manager process, those two then are introduced to the community through informal, you know, maybe it's up here, it's a meet and greet, there's food. If they're from away, if they're not local, then, you know, we would want to bring them around town. Somebody should bring them around and, and let them see the area. So that would be two, the final two applicants would be down to that. And then hopefully, there is a strong opinion about which one seems to stand out. Typically, the last step, if you're down to two, the last step is there is a, a follow-up interview between the town manager and the two applicants, because the responsibility of the hiring is on me, but I really don't want the responsibility to be only on me. It's a big decision and it needs to be, you know, I, I really want to be informed.
Is that by state statute, that part of it, the responsibility of making that decision and stuff? And that falls on the-
The hiring of the police chief is the responsibility of the town manager. But like I said, I, I, I don't want that to be a, a decision that's made in, in a room somewhere without public input. I want it to be very well informed. And I want to hear from people, like we have a bad vibe here. You know, I, I really want that to be informed, whereas maybe I'm the one signing the contract, but I'm getting really good impact, in, input from people in the community. I think it's really important. It's a really critical position in town. Should not be made by one person. So like I said, I'm hoping that when it comes down to the final two, that we have a really good feeling that, you know, really this is the person, you know? So, so that's kind of the process.
So I have a couple of questions and a little bit of concern. The outside group is narrowing it down and you said five or six. I think as chair of the search committee for town manager, we weren't so rigid. So I would be encouraging, you know, it did, if there's nine and there are nine good ones, take the extra time to interview them. The other thing that I really thought was good about the town manager search is we had two select board members and I thought that that was good. And we also had some employees. So maybe it's just a different role, but I think it's okay if it's larger group two in the, or, you know, when you get to the interviewing and things. I think it's okay to have more input than, you know, and I think if the state, if we have some, someone from the league, we have Jim, we have you, you know, we want to make sure that the select board is well represented and the town. And also, the union rep, is that from the union or is that some-
It'll be our union rep, it'll be the local union rep. So you'll have, there'll be an officer on there.
Okay, thank you. Those are my, those are my comments and not concerns, but suggestions.
So for me personally, I think Trevor Whipple as a starter is a, a good person to be in that, in that board. With his history in law enforcement and what he does for VLCT, I, I think having him involved would be great. I think we need to be cautious on overfilling that board with too many people and see what the guidance is from people like Jim and Trevor as far as what, how many is too many. And I think as long as we're grabbing the questions that are brought from the community, that that's appropriate.
And Jim will not be on the oral board. He will just be guiding the oral board. Jim will not be sitting.
And we had, how many was on the town manager? There were seven.
Seven, really, once you start getting over seven people, trying to get set, more than seven people to come to the consensus.
I thought you said-
Five to seven.
Oh, five to seven.
You said five to seven. I think five is a little small, is all I'm saying.
Well, we, we want good representation. So I, I, I am fine with seven and I think this is seven, but yeah.
One, one thought that I had about Trevor, I, I think he's a valuable resource and it's important that he is on this board. But what is his position? Is it an advisory or is it also gonna be an influential? If there's a vote for deciding which candidate's gonna go forward? Do we put him in a position that he has that authority to vote with us or to help make those decisions? Or is it strictly gonna be an advisory position to, you know, to help, help us with all the details or questions we might have?
This is proposing the oral board would, would be who narrows it down. So I'm, I'm proposing that he be on the oral board, so he would have-
And have the same authority that anybody else would on that board. I just want to clarify that, whether that's how it worked and that's how, how we're gonna have it or not or whatever.
Is there a cost for him to do this or is that just-
No, it's part of our membership fees. Yep. And Trevor, we can have Trevor serve in whatever capacity we want. He, he doesn't have to be on the oral board. I mean, his insight is valuable.
No, I think it's important that we have him there too. I was just curious about whether he was a voting member when it came down to making the decisions like we did on the manager search, yes, no pile and this and that. And make sure that we keep the, the amount of people on it to an odd number for the votes. Cause there, most of them were pretty clear cut as we went along, but there were a few that were divided and it was kind of close. But most of it was pretty obvious and as we got less candidates, it seemed like it became more obvious. So I didn't, I don't, I don't remember that much conflict.
When Trevor's been used in other towns, has he actually been a voting member? Okay.
And I think, I mean, as far as people go, Trevor is, yes, that's his position with VLCT. But his interaction with the Vermont, it's just changed their title, Vermont Criminal Justice Training Council. You know, he's gonna have the most in-depth knowledge of law enforcement in Vermont at the current moment.
What's going on with the academy, all that stuff.
That they're trying to work on, et cetera, so.
So that's good.
Oh, yeah.
He is an invaluable person to, to be in that position.
So are there any decisions that we have to make today?
No, no, I'm just kind of letting you know, this is a process. I mean, cause if you all of a sudden are just like, no, we hate this process. I didn't think you would, but you know, I just want to know that upfront.
I mean, there's a few things that we're gonna have to finalize as far as how many members or, or is that decided today?
That, you can decide that today or you don't have to. I mean, I was gonna proceed with seven unless you tell me you don't want seven.
I think that's a good number.
I think it is two. I, I agree, I think five is too, too little. Those two extra members are, are helpful. Who the citizens are, we, you know, need to think about how we want to advertise for that. And we could just advertise and see who we get.
So Julie, it will be the select board who appoints this committee, correct?
That I don't, I don't know. That is entirely up to our town. So like in the town of Springfield, their select board was not involved at all. There was zero select board input. In the town of Hartford, they had very little select board input. It was all the town manager in their group. I think our dynamic is different. You know, I think it depends on the dynamic of that specific town.
So as far as appointing the search committee or whatever?
They're, they're not actually appointed.
Oh, okay.
It's just an oral board that's formed.
Okay.
Yeah. But I have, but I am seeking the input of the select board. So I think it just depends on each town. I think we don't have a controversial board, you know? I think our board is kind of united on what we're looking for and where we're headed. So, you know, I'm seeking the input of the board, not to be exclusive of the board. So I don't think that's, you know, that's not our dynamic. But as far as an appointment, there doesn't need to be an, an appointment because these interviews are not- This process is not by open meeting law standard, a public process.
Whether it's an appointment or whether it's just people that gather together, if there's more people interested in being on this board or being with this group, then there are positions open. It's, it's gonna be an appointment or it's gonna be, you know, consideration. Here are the seven people, I'm sorry, the other five.
And I guess then you need, the board needs to direct me on, are you wanting to make that decision? Or are you, am I doing that? I guess there needs to be a discussion about that.
Makeup of the, of the people on the board.
If you, if I all of a sudden have five people that are interested.
Well, I, you know, I want to say that this is-
No, I, no, I really want to-
This is a huge position for our town. And it comes up once every how often, right? And I think we're in a time where, you know, it's, I think it's clear, we'll see the report that we want more community involvement and these kinds of things. So I think it's just really important who we appoint.
I have a question.
Or not appoint because it's not appointed, but who's on this is really an important thing.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
When you, when you hire this person, is it gonna be a contract and there's gonna be a term limit on it or?
There will be a contract this time around, yes.
Okay, that's, so are you looking at three or five years or?
Probably a three, maybe a two.
I also think the way you've set this up in our agenda, you know, bringing it down to two candidates, most likely. But then there will be before the community, you know, people who are interested to come and ask questions. You've, you've made that pretty, I like that a lot. They don't need to be on the search committee, but they might like to be on the welcome committee.
Well, and I hope they are. I mean, that, you know, that's kind of the point of that because not everybody can be-
Right.
On the committee.
Yep.
So, but you could, but they can still have input.
Absolutely.
It'll, it'll be interesting to see what kind of response we get from the community when we put this out there, that we're looking for people to be involved. And that'll tell us a lot as far as what kind of involvement citizens want in this.
Yep.
So it's looking like seven members instead of the five to seven, stay with the seven. One or two select board members? What's the consensus of the board if they had a choice in this?
Well, it depends, it depends on who the second person would bump off of the composition. So, you know, if there wasn't a great deal of public interest or those, you know, the makeup, I think it would be fine to have two select board members. But I think, you know, you don't want to bump off.
Third one if he's interested.
So, so maybe-
Yeah, so I don't know.
So maybe we just keep it at one for now? And if it seems like we might need a, a second to help with the group because there's not enough folks interested?
Or need or if you find a deep interest from another select board member. You know, I mean, it's, it's not always the need, but rather the interest.
Well, the other thought that I just had was that the select board, well, town manager has direct jurisdiction over this position. But the select board is right there. So having the select board have a significant amount of input into this whole process and the selection of the final candidate makes a lot of sense to me. Whether that's one person who reports back to the board and the board can give that one person their input or two people from the board that sits on this committee. Seems to me that I'd like to think about a little bit more about what that number should be because it is a significant decision and it comes along once every 20 years theoretically. And to have a selection that we are ultimately responsible for, but don't have the input into kind of concerns me. Not that I don't trust whoever would be on that committee, but I just want to make sure that we're thinking clearly about how much input we should have and we're not shortchanging ourselves relative to, well, if we only have one or if we have two, we're bumping somebody else off. I mean, that's a thought process I'd like to go through together, maybe as we get closer to the, to the appointment of, or, you know, the selection of the search committee.
I agree with you. Wholeheartedly.
So it's, it's a pretty good consensus of where we're, where we're heading and how we want to do this. And we'll be discussing this in the future. As it comes up, after the advertising and after everything else gets rolling and we could figure it out from there.
And I'd like to just add, I know towns do it differently, right? But we are unique, all of us are unique. And this board has had a lot of input over the last eight years about some of these things. And so I think that that's, and we, we really understand the importance of this role. So not that you aren't totally confident to do it, but I think for the community policing right now, it would be way better for the community to know that we're a part of, that we're supporting Julie in this process.
And I think the assessment's gonna help a lot and that's coming up in a couple of weeks. And that, that might help us in our decisions and, and guide us to where we want to go. And I think there's a pigeon trying to get in the window up there. Just flew away. I don't know if that's a sign or not. Anybody else, any other questions or concerns or comments before we move on?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Julie.
Okay.
Financial update, the first half of the year. I guess fuel prices have been going down, right? And I guess the prices of everything else have been going up along with the fuel. It's amazing. On my end of it, in my occupation and probably I guess most people's, the, the price of, of parts and price of anything has almost doubled in the last year or two. And I realize inflation's at eight or nine percent, but when you double the price of things that were a year ago were one price and this year they're double it, it's a little more than seven, eight, nine percent inflation. I don't know. How's it affecting our budget? Bad, good?
So-
It didn't look too bad.
Well, fuel lines, we are already at 100% spent and we're halfway through the year. So, you know, if it goes down, that would be great. Department heads are, I mean, it's hard to tell halfway through the year. You know, the end of the third quarter will really tell us where we're, where we're headed. Department heads at this point are obviously, again, cutting spending in areas that make sense. We also don't want to just not do things and, you know, have to deal with them next year or have, you know? So there are, there are things that we're doing that, in cutting and watching numbers and being creative and trying to keep expenses down, knowing that we likely will end with a deficit. I don't know how you don't end up with a deficit in 2022 at this point, but we're gonna do everything we can to not or to keep that number as low as we possibly can. I am starting the work on building the 2023 budget. Just with things that, needs that we know we have and wishes that we would like, we'll see. One discussion that we'll have with the board is, you know, what is gonna be an acceptable increase? I don't know that going from 22 to 23 to not have any form of a, of an increase, I don't think is gonna be possible, given our current times. So that, this is just a thought to be had is what, what are we gonna view as, as acceptable? So again, I'm just, I'm starting to build it. We got a long way to go, obviously it's only August, but. So general fund, I mean, it's holding at this point, you know, we're, we're holding. It's just what's gonna happen in this next half. The other thing that we have noticed is our tax collection, of course, tax bills went out in July. So tax collection so far in August at this time is down. Normally by now, we will, we would have collected about 200,000 more than we have at this point this year. That could be any number of things. That could be people are just waiting to pay their taxes closer to the due date. It could be all kinds of things. So I'm not nervous about it, but we watch that number daily in comparison. So hopefully we do not end up with a large delinquency rate come September 15. That's just what we're kind of trying to, not much we can do about it at this point. But we, we, with the VH, whatever that program is, through the state that's doing the assistance on delinquent taxes, mortgage payments, we've had a lot of, a lot of collection on that. Some very large delinquencies have gotten paid through that, which has been great. So our delinquency at this point is lower than it's ever been. We're, we're down below 200,000 at this point, which is great. But our current collections are down. So we're kind of see where that all balance is at the end of the year, but.
I think a lot of it has to do with the cost, people worried about the cost of home heating this winter.
Yep. I think people are just being more cautious right now.
Holding their breath and see where they're gonna be at.
Yep. Yep, I mean, I have not received-
It's a tough year.
Yep. I haven't received any calls to say, I don't know what I'm gonna do, I can't pay my taxes, what can I do? I have not received any of those calls. So I'm hoping that it is just, people are waiting. There's also a few banks that would normally have paid by now for their escrow accounts. We haven't received that. So there's still some, you know, things moving around in there, but just, we're watching that closely on a daily basis. And then water sewer, both are, are holding great. Those, but both those budgets are steady and revenue on both of those lines, or both of those departments are steady. Both have healthy fund balances. You know, so some projects are getting done that needed to get done. Some pump repair that's been long overdue. Having Wayne Wickens as in our water sewer department and being a master electrician has served us very well over the past year. And a lot of, a lot of stuff getting done that would, would have been, if not cost prohibitive, would have been very expensive to have done. So having him on staff has really been a blessing. And then the addition of Steve too is just amazing.
A perfect example is we just upgraded our Pleasant Brook pump station. It took a while because we had to wait for parts and stuff, simple parts. Cause it, but we, we didn't change the pumps again, but we upsized all the conduit and everything. So if in the future it needs to be upgraded, it's gonna be just throw the pump in and, and wire it. It's, it's set for any future expansion that way. But if we had done the pump, the station upgrade, had somebody else come and do it, it would have cost us probably close to $20,000 more than- it would have cost us probably close to $20,000 more than what we spent on it. We spent our time in the, the parts, but it's ready to go. But like the pump that we just put in First Avenue today, we had, it's a rebuilt pump, costs $13,500 to do it. But, you know, five, six years ago, that was the price of a new pump. Price of a new pump now is almost $24,000. So that's, you know, I, I believe in rebuilding because I think the older stuff holds up better anyway. If you can get it rebuilt, it'll last longer than a lot of the newer stuff, so.
That's a great asset to have when you have someone that's certified as an electrician and, and in the water and sewer department, there's a lot going on with the electrical part of it.
He's changed over a bunch of our lights to LEDs and stuff down the plant and changed our D O probes, which would have been like a $10,000 job and we just paid, basically paid for the parts, which is about half. So, you know, there's, there's been great assets with him and we work well together and he's, he's excited about the stuff we've done, so.
So if you see him on the road doing his thing, thank him. Anybody have any questions or concerns or comments regarding anything on our half year budget review?
I agree with Julie, it's kind of hard to tell.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's nice to look at, so thank you. But it's.
It's tough.
It's tough.
At this point billing had not gone out and.
I mean, the obvious ones are the fuel.
Our next quarter, we'll know about the taxes too, what's come in, so.
Yep, you'll start seeing a better picture third quarter.
Our cash flow, because of what we have in our reserve and all that, we're not looking at tan notes or anything.
We did, we did the one tan, we won't need a second tan note.
There's not going to be anything else, yeah. We did get a little break or the citizens got a little break this year because of the education budget did go down. So most people's taxes this year are, are down a little bit compared to last year.
Yep, which is nice.
I mean, that's, that's encouraging. I'm not quite sure what's going to happen this year, but at least we're starting out at a place that we were better than last year. But I don't know. All right, so we'll move on from the financial update, which brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is about money again.
Yep.
Public safety building and the town garage cost overrun.
So they, they're, we're wrapping up the projects, town garage has a little bit more to be done, punch list items that we're working through, so on and so forth. But, so we're starting to kind of rein in where we're going to end. And we've known right along, there were going, definitely going to be cost overruns on this. It's looking today, and again, there could still be contingency, there's no contingency in, in, in what I'm calculating. It's somewhere around the 250 mark, which is kind of what we thought.
For both combined.
For both, for both buildings combined. Part of that, of course, we just knew we were going to have because of the COVID stuff, but in addition, there were some things we added to the highway garage, replacing the modines, doing some other stuff while, while the garage was under repair. So my question is, it's really more of a philosophical, philosophical question as far as how do you want to handle this cost overrun? We didn't budget it because we weren't sure, sure where we would land. So we kind of just said last year, we'll let it run where it is, when we've got that final number, we'll decide what we want to do. So we could, we could borrow, pay it back through the capital, or it is something we could use ARPA funds for. It's kind of a one-time expense. I, I, you know, I know it's, it's not a fun glamorous, you know, recreation project, but it, it, like Arnie and I were talking the other day, it definitely fits the intent of the ARPA funds, that their cost overruns are primarily due to COVID. It's one-time money, these are one-time expenses for sure. And it might be just a great way to finalize those projects and there would still be, um,
Good chunk of change.
There would still be a good chunk left in the ARPA funds.
Well, and we could also do half and half.
We could also do half and half.
You know, you don't have to do all one, all the other.
Absolutely not, no.
So it's a, it's a decision that the board has to make on how we want to handle this 250, $300,000 deficit. Do we take it from the ARPA funds? Do we take out a loan? Do we do half and half or whatever options?
And when do you need to make the decision?
We are not going to do anything until I know that final number.
Oh, okay.
But it's something to think about.
Right.
I mean, what you were saying, the intent of the ARPA funds, and I, that's kind of the way I was looking at it, was because of COVID-19 related expenses and it was a good way to spend the money because it is a one-time thing and it's directly related a lot of those cost overruns because of what was going on. And those monies were originally allocated for specifically something like that, then they broaden it where we could spend it in other places. Had it been under the original recommendations, it would be, well, that's kind of where you have to spend it, whether you want to or not. So it's just something to keep in mind and think about as we go forward on how to deal with this 200, $300,000 deficit.
And this is.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I just wondering if the, the paving at the town garage is part of the cost overruns?
No, that was a bond that we did, that, that's completely separate of this project.
But it's going to be done this year?
It is. I think they're, I think it's in September. Kirby got a date, I think it's September.
I just think because the way it is now, as far as maintenance of the building and everything, having a clean paved driveway will help on the maintenance part of the, the building itself. Because they're tracking in all that mud and everything else, you know?
Yeah, we got a price, we got our price from basin. It came in just under 100 to pave over there, so, yeah. Yeah, Kirby's got it, we are taking off the final, we're taking off the top grade.
Yeah.
Getting it prepped.
Heather, you have something you wanted to say? No?
I don't remember.
Well, I'm.
I'm happy to discuss it more in the future, but personally I would rather us use that ARPA funding for this as opposed to borrowing and having it cost more in the future, so.
Well, and with interest rates going where they are.
Yeah.
That's the other thing.
Yeah, that was going to be my comment too, is how do we save the taxpayer money? We use the money we already have.
Right.
Okay, that seems like the consensus of the board is heading in that, heading in that direction. So when we finally get the final numbers, we can make that final decision unless something, if something changes, it seems like that's the way we'll probably head. And that, and like Julie was saying, that still leaves $600,000.
I remember. Where are, thank you, sorry.
Go ahead.
Where are the solar project? Because that was something, remember that with the ARPA funds?
There's not, there is not enough ARPA funds to buy the solar.
No, no, I know there aren't, but are, where are we in that? And that may be under old business or new business.
So it's coming up in a future agenda. Lee and I are, are working, I'll let, I'll just shut up and let Lee say.
Well, so Julie and I had a chat with Green Lantern or whoever it was. And we're kind of dancing around each other as far as what the price was going to be and we had had some discussion because the contract that we have currently requires some kind of a assessment.
Right, right.
From an independent third party.
We finally got it.
And so, no, what happened was we couldn't find anybody, then we found somebody, Julie suggested them, the person to that, to Green Lantern, they said, well, maybe we don't need an assessment. It's like, well, Julie just spent four weeks trying to find somebody. So what we ended up doing is having the discussion and they said, well, you know, we have this modeling that shows how much it's worth and blah, blah. It's like, okay, can you send us the model? Well, we have to clean it up because it includes all of the properties that we own, so we'd have to pull Chester out of it. So we finally got the model, it's a spreadsheet that's got a billion cells in it and they're all tied to each other. And so I've been trying to go through in my spare time to understand this model. And one of the things that I found, I mentioned to Julie on voting day, was the fact that solar panels are typically derated over a 25-year period from 100% production to 85% production. Their deratement was to 90% or something or other. So this is a significant amount of money that they're anticipating, because what they've done is they've developed a present, net present value. And so based on their model, they came up with some number that we have to try to figure out how they came up with that number and whether or not we agree with it. And so when Julie looked at the numbers, she said, well, we can't buy this. And I said, well, we don't have to offer them what they say it's worth, we can offer them half of that or whatever. So we're still trying to work through.
Half is a little bit.
Yeah. We're still.
We can offer them 25%.
We're still trying, I'm still trying to work through this. I suggested to Julie that we have a phone call with the people that understand this spreadsheet because it's very complicated. And, you know, when I changed the deratement factor where I thought it needed to change, it didn't change the bottom line. So I'm not sure, it did not.
Really?
Yeah, so I'm not sure why. And I want to just make sure I understand all of their assumptions because every model is based on assumptions. And so trying to understand exactly where this thing is going to land and how they are generating this number, net present value.
Well, and if they've created it, it's going to benefit them, right? And in those situations, it may be worth it if we're still interested to get the assessment from our point of view. You know, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, it's good to look at, but to save a few dollars on an assessment and pay 12 times what you would have to or some, you know, is crazy business.
Well, interestingly enough, theoretically, the number that they had, the valuation they had in the contract that we could have purchased at year seven was just a shade under a million dollars.
It's the one we should go with.
Yeah, yeah. But the fact of the matter is that their net present value now is much more than that. And so how did it increase in value over that period of time? Because energy costs haven't gone up that much, the, the rate that they're getting from their power purchase agreement has not increased that much. So that's the question that I need to ask and try to find out is how they arrived number one at the first number of 980,000 or whatever it was, and now this number that's a lot more than that, so.
Well, and the ARPA funding, thank you for that, but the reason, you know, do we spend the ARPA on the overrun costs or do we look at the power or the solar panels? But if it's that crazy over, it may not make that much of a difference.
So I, I don't want to give up on this because I think this is a, this would be a huge benefit to Chester to have all their energy, our energy costs paid for. And then some, because this is a, this is a 750 kilowatt system, which means it makes about 920, oh, that's the other number Julie. They're claiming it makes about 925,000 kilowatt hours a year, which is a lot of power. And so Chester right now, our allocation from this particular model is around, where's the number? It's around 32%, something like that. It depends on, on what time of year and all that stuff. So we're not taking the majority of the power right now, but, you know, we would have, if we bought it and had access to all that power, we would have more than enough power, I think, to run the town and some to sell. So that's what we need to figure out is can we come up with the money, meet in the middle somewhere, come up with the money to buy this and then be set for our energy needs for the next 40, 50 years?
Wow, that would be a huge plus.
It would be a huge piece, yeah. I mean, we're talking about diesel costs and the diesel prices are all over the place, but if we make our own electricity, we're pretty much pre-buying our electric bill, our electricity for the next 40 years, 50 years. And that's one way of looking at it, that's what I tell my customers is, yeah, it's a big chunk of money right now, but you won't have an electric bill for the next 30 years.
Right.
So once you've done and, once it's paid for, it's just gravy.
And there's other real big benefits as we all know about solar, right?
Well, from my opinion.
Well, it'll make us a green town for sure.
Yeah.
I mean, we kind of already are because we're hooked into this already, but the fact that if we owned it, I think it would be fantastic.
Arnie, I have a question.
Sure.
First of all, I, I got solar at my place and I never regretted it. You know, my, my, my light bills, my bills for the power company is like eight, 10 bucks a month just for administration fees, you know? And second of all, when, when they put this in, I remember there was a big issue about the contract or whatever, however they did it. But, and we had a chance to purchase it at seven years, the price wasn't set at that time.
There was, there was a recommended price. If you buy it at seven years, when we signed the contract, they had a number in there that was the goal. So, yeah, that was what they were banking it was going to be worth after seven years. But this, the contract says we will get an independent assessment of the costs or the value, and that's what we're going to use to negotiate the purchase.
Because it would have been nice if the price was set, then we couldn't be jacking it up on them.
But Jeff, you and I both know that when you sign a contract like that, it's not going to be in our favor.
Could, not to move it ahead, but could we put that on one of the next agendas?
It's coming up, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the September 7th one.
Okay, good. Then, sorry, I.
Nope, you're fine.
Brought the tension to.
Lee, thanks for all your work and time on this, going over all those numbers and all that data, that must be a blast.
Well.
Yeah, I got it and went.
What?
Lee, here you go. Like, I don't even know what any of this is saying, I couldn't even find the net present value, Lee had to tell me what line it was on.
I mean, and a lot of it.
Oh, my word. Sorry, that's good that we'll have some idea about the numbers when we're talking about the ARPA and this also.
An independent, third-party assessment would be fantastic. But you just can't, it doesn't seem like there, a person like that exists or.
Well, we did find somebody. It was 4, it was 4,500 bucks.
How much?
It was 4,500 and we approved it. We then, you approved it and then I came back and said, well, wait on, hang, hang on because what they're saying now is, well, maybe we don't need it, so we, we held off and said, let's see what we can do first. And maybe we still need to go back.
It sounds we still need it and it was approved a while ago. I don't know, I mean, I get how you guys made that decision to wait, but if it's, you know, to the moon and back kind of price.
Yeah, we're going to have another meeting.
I, I, I agree that we should meet and then we probably should do it anyway, do the assessment.
Assessment anyway.
Wouldn't be hurt to have another set of eyes on it.
Just because you and I were both pretty shocked at the number. And so to have somebody come in and either verify or say, yeah, wait a minute, something's not right.
Right.
Honestly, I, I've gone through the spreadsheet, but I don't have time to dig into it the way I need to.
There's a lot there.
And whether or not I'm going to ever understand their assess, their assumptions or somebody's going to be able to explain those to us in order for us to come to the same conclusion, I don't know, it's probably.
I think doing our due diligence, we should have it anyway.
Okay, well, then I will reach, I'll reach out to Mike Gamble and.
Good, and I'll, I'll close the spreadsheet, never look at it again.
We'll just reach out to Mike, okay, I will just hire him to do it. Perfect. Makes life easier for me.
So somehow public safety building morphed into a solar field.
Sorry.
Discussion, and as my fault relating, I'll get out of hand and go that way, but.
That was my fault, sorry.
It was kind of, I guess, an addendum to old business. So we just misplaced it a little bit. And we didn't make any decisions really that we, we just reaffirmed a decision that we made earlier and that was just put off of that assessment. So it's not like we're being negligent or bad. Anything else about the public safety or town garage cost overruns? We're all set with that. Next item is newer business, newer business, new business, new agenda items. I kind of tried to combine both those in one thing, new agenda. Anybody have anything that they would like?
Nothing more than what Julie has on the memo.
Yeah, Julie has it on the memo.
Yeah, you've got some stuff coming up.
Yeah, we've got quite a bit coming up.
We're for solar farm too.
Personnel policy, that's fun. It's on there, Julie.
I'm getting there, I'm getting there.
Bertie did say that AFG awards are starting to come out this week and boy, that would be.
AFG awards are starting to come out and we've never had this happen. So we definitely have not heard no because those rejection letters have gone out. We have not gotten one on either application. But second of all, Sanders office called.
That's good news.
To ask for our info, which means we likely got an award. The two applications were the compressor system and our tanker.
The two were what?
We had two applications in, one for the new tanker and one for the compressor system, the whole new compressor system. So I have not got a rejection on either one and those have gone out and Sanders office called for our info, which means we got an award. I'm just really hoping it's the tanker and maybe it's both.
Well, that's exciting.
And when will that news, do you think, be? And when will that news, do you think, be?
The award letters are, are coming out, so we should be getting something.
I think, let us know so we can...
I will let you know as soon as I know.
That would be perfect for the new building, a new tanker?
Get rid of the old one. That resolves that whole issue, and our match is 5%.
That is exciting.
It's very exciting. Very exciting.
Anything else?
No, just what's in the memo.
For the next agenda?
For the next agenda, you...
Are we gonna, I'm sorry, are we gonna do a grand opening of the town garage and do a show and tell of...
I think when it's done, done, yes. When it's done and paved and like done, done.
October.
Yeah, hopefully in October. Yeah, that's the plan.
So, is there, can I just swing by and poke my head in there? I haven't seen it.
Absolutely. You should definitely stop in. It's not done. There's still stuff happening in there, but you can definitely, oh, you definitely should. It's very different. Yeah, the whole, the whole center area. It's fabulous.
With the upstairs, too?
Yes.
The other thing is, is you know the, in October, I think it's the first week in October, there's the town meeting...
Town fair?
The town fair, that for years, we haven't gone because it's, I went with you, Bill, once. It's the first Wednesday or something.
The sixth and seventh.
So, could we put on the agenda, do we want someone to go? Do we want to all go? Like, what's the deal?
At least have some representation would be helpful.
So, I'm on, do it before, yeah. Okay, so I'm on the board. So, last year, you just had me be your voting member, because I have to go. That's part of the agreement with the board, so I'll be there.
Right.
But I can get you the other tracks. There, there's, there's education tracks.
Right, right.
That, and there may be stuff you're interested in, so absolutely.
Well, and it's a good opportunity for people to go.
Absolutely.
But if there's a meeting, then there's a conflict.
It's, it's a, it's a Thursday, Friday.
Oh.
It's a Thursday, Friday.
It changed.
It's a Thursday, Friday.
There's some good programs there.
There is some good stuff. And this year, we developed some good, some good tracks of very current topics, so. Absolutely. Yep, the info's going out to our employees as well. We have a few already signed up, so. Yes, I'll get you that info.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent. Next agenda item. Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
Here are Warren's here.
Recording stopped.